Councilmember Rennbaum is present, Mayor Moss is present, absent is Councilmember Young and Councilmember McQuon.
Thank you. This time will withstand. We'll have a moment of silence, please, and then we'll have the pledge. This time is Kate Johansson who's going to come and lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No.
There are no public comments, we'll move to consideration of the minutes. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 28th workshop and 28th regular meeting.
Um, I'm, well, I guess we do the workshop first.
I move that we approve the minutes as read in the agenda.
Sir, permit.
Any other questions? Call in favor. Thank you. Regular agenda items.
We have the minutes from the.
Yep, you had the minutes from the regular meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you all did choose.
I emailed them?
Yeah, I got them.
Okay.
Um, the first ones were fine, but the, there was one thing that I wanted to add on, under discussion or items to consider for the upcoming meetings. Remember, we talked about getting a quote.
Yes.
And scope from.
Yes.
Can we put that in the minutes? Can we add that in the minutes?
Yes.
Just to show, just to log that we started the process.
Yeah, we never did, I haven't gotten the email.
No, I, I, I recognize it. It's okay. I know you've been sick and all these, you know.
He hasn't, we'll get to that later.
So we have an amended motion for the January 28th workshop, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
If that's the motion she would like to make.
Yes. Um, I move that we approve the minutes with amended to add that we, that the council directed to get the quote and scope of work from Verdunity.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Regular agenda items, discussion, action, to consider an act on the final plat of Block 1, 2, 3, Block 1, Oak Hill Edition being 2.745 acres, J.M. Froman survey, abstract number 471, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located in 4800 block of IH20 Service Road North. Betty.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, this is a final plat for a three lot subdivision, it's 2.745 acres and is located on the northeast corner of the Service Road and Meadows Place Drive. The owner is the Oak Ridge Church of Christ and they propose to plat the property into three lots. They will retain Lot 3 to go with their church property. Lots 1 and 2 are for sale and transfer. Cross access is provided as required by zoning and the subdivision organs. The property has existing utilities, a 12-inch water main in Meadows Place Drive and existing tenant sanitors, sunlight in the utility Eastman on the north side of the property. The property is zone commercial and is in the IH20 overlay district. Planning and zoning commission and staff have reviewed the final plat. It meets the requirements of the city's subdivision organs and is recommended for approval as presented. I would be happy answering questions and there are members of the church here.
Any questions for Betty?
Well, it's good to meet you.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I move that we approve the plat as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, to consider an act on appointment, reappointment of members to the planning and zoning commission. I'd like to propose the next two-year term for the three members, Billy Wykert, Sharon Bruton, and Jared Fowler, with the alternate of Scott Smith. I'd like to make that recommendation to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Billy Wykert, Sharon Bruton, Jared Fowler, and alternate of Scott Smith, of course, P and Z.
Any other discussion?
Well, I second it.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, to consider an act on the 2018-19 City of Willow Park financial audit. Mr. Grimes.
Good evening. Um, tonight, we have representatives from CLA here, Clayton Lawson and Associates. Um, for, they did, they've been working on our audit, uh, last couple of months, going back to probably November, December-ish. And, um, we've been working with them diligently, Jake Weber, our finance team, and, um, so without further ado, we'll let y'all, we'll let y'all run with it.
So, well, thank you very much for allowing us to have a bit of time in the closing meeting tonight so we can present the results of the audit. Everybody should have a couple of things in front of you. One should be a valid copy of the financial statements and then a folder that has some additional letters and everything in it. Uh, we also do have a PowerPoint. I think there should be a printed copy in the folder that we can go through as well. So really, we'll just give you a brief introduction of who the audit team was this year. We're going to go through some required communications, the audit results, as well as just some financial trends and analysis that we have in the PowerPoint, and then just a key sum, key issues in summary. So as far as the audit team was this year, we had myself as the principal, so I'm the, individual that's responsible for signing the actual audit, making sure that everything is done and we're following the accounting standards and government regulations as well. And then Rebo Long, who is the manager of our whole work office, who, um, he's a senior workup, and also had Austin, uh, the senior on the city's audit, and then Danielle, who has an associate who works on the city's audit. Okay. And Rebo?
So, the most important thing that we're going to cover tonight is that you guys had a unmodified opinion, so that is clean opinion, that's high level of assurance that we can go, um, so we didn't find any material on the statements in the financial, um, so that's exactly what you wanted to get. So, uh, the second thing I wanted to cover is, uh, we have a report on internal controls included in one of our letters. Uh, and this year, we issued a material weakness, just based on, one, adjusting journal entry we had to post to record retainage payable at year-end. Um, this is one of those accounting accruals that we don't expect you guys to keep track of during the year, it's just a year-end thing, and because you guys had so much construction in progress at the end of the year, um, with the big projects going on, that was a material amount that we posted. Uh, I did want to point out, last year, we posted quite a few adjusting journal entries that were material, um, and this year, Jake and Candy did a great job of taking those over, and so the books were in really good shape when we got them, there was huge improvement between the years. Uh, and we also had a significant deficiency last year that we were able to get rid of this year, so really just came down to that one little entry, year-end entry, so.
That's good.
Really, really good report. Um, and then our next required communication letter.
Yeah, I have a question.
There we go. Sure.
Uh, unmodified audit opinion, how rare is that, getting something like that?
Um, that's what most of our clients get, usually there are ways to remedy, um, if there are significant journal entries that need to be posted to get to that, where the financial statements are materially correct, um, but then you would see those internal control deficiencies where the auditor had to do quite a bit of work, um, to get there. But, that's what most of my clients get.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to pass it over to Austin to cover this.
I was just going to say one, one other addition thing, it's actually very rare to have anything other than an unmodified opinion, because then you're into the realm of modified, which means we either have to disclaim an opinion, we got a scope limitation, or we had just an adverse opinion, which means you didn't properly adopt an accounting standard or something like that, so it's actually more rare to have a modified opinion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll briefly go through the other letter, uh, the governance letter. So this is our required communication that we have to give, um, for the audit standards. Within it, it'll, we'll see, we note that in Note 1 of the financial statements, it lists all your policies, procedures, major, um, accounting standards that you follow up, just kind of running those stuff. Um, there was no new policies or standards adopted this year, so that was something I wanted to point out, um, which is fine, there's just nothing that the government, or the government, government accounting board put out that you would need to follow. Uh, we didn't have any changes in the scope of the audit, so it was pretty similar, um, to prior year. Uh, the second, second part, estimates, uh, so part of what we do is, we make sure that, uh, estimates that are made by management are reasonable, so a few things that I wanted to point out, appreciable lives of assets, so, you know, such a vehicle, making sure that that's a reasonable, that you're appreciating it over a reasonable amount of time. Um, uncollectible balances of receivables, so, um, determining how much of it needs to be written off, how much is actually collectible, um, and then our big Gatsby accruals of the net pension liability. Uh, so all of that, we were comfortable with, we didn't have any sort of, um, you know, arguments in that, that kind of goes to the next one, difficulties, didn't have any difficulties with management. Um, Brian and Candy, they're very easy to work with, they provide everything that we need, so that's, we just want you to be aware of that. Um, and we didn't have any other findings other than what Reba talked about. This letter would be where we would say, hey, you know, we ran into this problem and we weren't really able to remedy it with management, we didn't have anything like that. Um, so that's pretty much it. Then, the last piece, there was no past adjustments, so sometimes if there's, uh, something that needs to be adjusted, but it's not really going to affect the financial statements, um, materially, we don't require that it's adjusted, uh, we didn't have anything like that, so. That was it. Thanks, Chris. So, now, over the next several slides here, we have some financial trends and some highlights that we just want to point out. The first one is looking at the overall government-wide financial trends, so these are the very broad statements for the, for sitting, it combines all of your funds together, all of your governmental funds, all of your enterprise funds together. In the very top line, it's just the cash investments for the cities, you can see that it has been trending down, as the city's been using some of those cash reserves over the past couple of years. Still very stable as far as overall cash, when you look at the, the bonds that have been issued and the spend now that has happened. And then the, the expenses has, has continued to trend upwards, which is what we typically see in most of our cities, just general cost of living increases, inflation over time, so not, not seeing anything out of the ordinary there. And then the expendable net position, that's really your, your reserves at the end of the day for government-wide. It's, when I mentioned, it's governmental and enterprise funds. They did start to, to, um, as you say, kind of slowing down a little bit, a lot of that is with the spending of the cash as well, because that's usually what's your primary expendable, uh, piece of net position is just cash reserves, and as you've been spending that down on projects and improvements and repairs and those types of things, that, that expendable net position line is just going to trend down slightly at the end of the day.
Could I get you to make sure you're writing that mic as close as you can?
Yes, I can. Is that better?
That's good, thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Pardon me.
Wait.
Rose, we can move this one down if we need to.
Amy, just slide yours closer to him.
There we go. Okay. Is that better?
My work.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, looking at this next slide, this is the general fund revenues for the city, and what we did is, we, we broke it out, and you can see the percents on there, in some of the different categories that are on there. The, the very bottom blue section, that's your property taxes, so you can see what portion of your total general fund revenues are, are property taxes, and it was, it's 41%. The next one up, that orange color, is going to be your sales tax for this, for the general fund as well. And then the, the next one up, that green section, is going to be your franchise taxes. You can see, with, with the percents on there, going from 41, 32, the 11%, and then going back five years, you can see it's been very consistent over those last five years. Your sales tax has started to, to increase a little bit, but that's expected, when you have development, that's going to hopefully be bringing businesses in, sales taxes are going to continue to increase and hopefully become a larger portion of that as well. And then, the other larger notable areas, that yellow piece at the top, that's just your license and permits, a lot of that's going to be dependent on development activity in the city. So, but, very consistent for the last five years as far as the overall makeup of your general fund revenues. A similar breakout on this one, this is just looking at your expenditures in the general fund. You will see there was, um, some adjustment in this one, really the biggest driver of that is going to be all of the capital outlay that happened this last year. That's that, uh, kind of the maroon piece at the very top that jumped all the way to 31% this year. That, that's a very significant increase in your capital outlay, the, but when you look at the raw numbers behind it, the percentages don't really tell you the full story. The raw numbers behind it, they're actually very consistent for your baseline functions, your administration, your police, your fire, rescue, the actual num, excuse me, the actual numbers behind it are very consistent year over year. It's just when we factor in that capital outlay, it's, it skews the percentages. So I just want to make sure you, you guys are aware of that, even though that, the percentages did change, the numbers behind them are.
And that capital outlay is essentially Ranch House Road, the Public Safety Building, the two.
Yep, and, and Reba is going to have that more, because she'll see it on the next slide as well, when we start looking at the budget to actual and things like that, you'll, that'll very, be very evident in there as well.
So this, this is just showing us the general fund revenues and expenditures, um, for the past five years, and you can see that everything is pretty consistent, except for that big jump in expenditures in 2019, and that's the capital outlay that we were talking about for Ranch House Road and Public Safety Building. Um, but, otherwise, you just see revenues just keep trucking upwards a little bit each year, so. Um, this gives us, uh, general fund revenues, budget versus actual, so budget is the blue column and actual is that orange column, um, and you can see that you guys are right on, uh, with your budget, uh, your actual is actually a little over budget this year, and that was primarily due to sales tax, which is great, y'all have seen a pretty big increase there over the past year, so.
Just to specify for people, whenever you're saying over budget, it's not that we are fending.
No, this is revenues.
Yes.
So you want to be over budget.
Yes. Make sure that people would all realize that this is, we've blown our numbers.
Yes.
We learned for revenue.
Yes, y'all did great, as far as revenues. So this is expenditures, um, same thing, budget versus actual, and you can see that the actual was about 2.2 million above the budget, and I just want to clarify that that is all due to the Ranch House Road and Public Safety Building, and it's not that it was over budget for the project, but just based on GAAP basis financials, budget comparison, it's over. So I don't want, I know Brian wants me to clarify that the project wasn't over.
Oh, and I want to clarify that too.
Yes.
This, this is money that was already there.
Yes.
It was already budgeted, it was already.
Planned for, spent in accordance with plan.
Right.
GAAP basis.
Yes.
It looks like this.
We didn't have a $2 million party.
No.
We're not going.
I heard about your Christmas party, though.
It, it was wild.
No. Anyway. Okay. And then this last slide is your unassigned fund balance for your general fund, which is basically, uh, the expendable portion of your general fund, um, and that percentage figure that we have through there is your, uh, percentage of your annual expenditures that, in that fund balance. Um, and what that basically tells us is that, um, you guys have about four months' worth of expenses sitting there that can be spent down. If everything were to stop, no more revenues came in, you guys could keep going for four months. You have a minimum fund balance policy of 25%. You guys are doing even better than that every year and staying really consistent, um, and this just helps you get, um, to January and February when you start getting those property tax payments in, so.
Does the state say specifics on what minimum we're going to keep?
No.
No?
No. They do for ISDs and counties, but cities, we can, we can do typically, the, I think the rule of thumb for ISDs is what, a 90-day?
Something like that.
Okay, so most governments, so we're about average for most governments.
Most cities we have, have 25% as their minimum, so. And then this last slide that I'm going to cover just covers, um, your future debt service payments, so this is principal and interest, if y'all weren't to take out any more debt. Um, you can see over the next seven years, your payment's about 1.8 million, and then it drops down to about 1 million, and then kind of trails off through 2046, so that's where you're sitting right now. And then Chris is going to finish.
Just a, a couple of slides to, to highlight some of the enterprise fund activity for the city. This first one's looking at that expendable portion of your enterprise funds, so it's your, your water, your wastewater and your solid waste. And, you can see, it, it decreased a little bit this year, down to 2.8 million from 3.1 million, that's still about a full year's worth of reserves in your enterprise funds, so very stable there, you're still sitting very well. The, and this really varies by, by function, this is looking at all three of them together, but when you start to break down the individual pieces of it, your water, your water and your solid waste are very good, your wastewater, you are covering a portion of your depreciation, but not 100% of it like you are in your other ones, so you're still, you're covering about 50% of it, so you're still pretty stable there. Nothing to be really concerned, you still have positive overall net position, and when you look at your, your balance sheet for your enterprise funds, you'll see that the unrestricted net position is negative, but that's because you're, you're so heavily invested in your capital assets and that function. So, nothing out of the ordinary that we see in a lot of our governments we work with, so even though you do see a negative number there, I wouldn't be overly concerned at this point in time.
Yep.
And the other, the other way we like to look at our enterprise funds typically is, how are we cash flowing our operations? So this, this corresponds with the statement of cash flow in your financial statements. This is looking at the day-to-day operations, so it's receipts from customers, payments of repairs, payments of wages, all of those types of things, any, anything used to operate it, are we actually cash flowing the operations? And, when you look at all three of them together, it was just over $1 million, and that was broken down between your, your water actually had kept positive cash flows from operations of about 760,000, your wastewater had positive cash flows of 190,000, that's why I'm not as concerned that you aren't covering all of your depreciation, you're at least covering your day-to-day operations, and that's, that's a good thing. And then your solid waste was about $50,000 in, in positive cash flow operations. Those three equal together to be about $1 million. So, so positive cash flows on your operations, that, that means your rates are covering your, your day-to-day operations, but it, we always like to put the caveat out there, you always should be monitoring those rates.
What kind of significant events happened, if you can think of that was, caused it up to, I mean, 2017 was pretty high, and then.
I think what happened was in 2017, um, and, I can't, I'm not going to speculate what happened in 2017.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to.
Would it include impact fees?
Yeah.
I mean, impact fees may be included in that, I don't know if that was part of your analysis or not.
I'd have to go back and double-check that.
You know, the, the, probably the big one between 18 and 19 is we did increase sewer.
2017 was way over on impact fees, I do remember that now. Um, that's why we had a huge surplus that year, so that's what it was, because we had so much building, you're right, it was the impact fees that year.
Okay, and then, and then just the, the final slide here, just looking at it, um, the city overall, very, very stable financially, uh, we've continued to see increases in sales tax, the ad valorem taxes as well, so to see the increases there, that means you're having some growth, which is great. Long-term debt, just continually monitor that, make sure that you're, you're managing your outstanding indebtedness to what the, the future goals are of the city, especially there's lots of development going on, um, as evident by the, the increase in the capital outlay here over the last year, as well as the outstanding debt as well. And then the other one that we just want to put out there, just to make sure that the council just keeps this in the back of your mind, is there is that large receivable between wastewater and water of about 1.4 million, make sure that that's just back there, and keep analyzing it, is wastewater actually going to repay that or not?
That's a, that's an interesting discussion that me and Jake have about once a month.
Yep, so, so that's the only thing that we just wanted to put out there, just make sure that's out there, and whether that should just be essentially written off as a transfer at, at some point in time, or if they're in, the intentions are to ever recover that in, in some way or some manner.
The, I think the premise, the history behind that, he brought this up last year as well, is that at one point, the water fund was covering, was it debt and operations, or was it just debt?
It was the debt and operations.
Of the, of the sewer plant.
And was this?
Ah.
Yeah.
2014.
Interesting.
Yeah, and it was set up to where the wastewater would repay the water fund, and it's just simply, it's, they're both from the enterprise fund, so it's just an interfund transfer.
It was way before us.
Yeah, yeah.
It was way, way before us.
So it's, it's a, yeah, it's, it's something me and Jake, yeah, we'll, we'll come to you guys probably in the spring about, or the summer, about how do we want to, and I think if, if y'all are okay with just write it off as a.
The council can do with it as they please.
Good answer.
On the, on the accounting background side of it, it's easy to get rid of, it's whether the council wants to, to essentially write that off.
Yes.
Thanks very much.
All right. Appreciate it.
So, any other questions? We're more than happy to answer any questions about the audit process, uh, anything else, as, as Reba had mentioned, Brian and Candy and Jake and everybody at the city were great to work with, gave us everything, uh, we asked for as quick as they could get it for us, and I think the audit overall went very well.
I, I want to commend you guys, y'all were great. Um, I apologize for, they actually made the front page of the, was it the Weatherford Democrat?
Yeah, for being here in front of the. We have it hanging up in our office now.
There you go. All right. It's like camping.
Yeah.
But, Democrat came in to do an article on, on a, on City Hall, and they were actually couched out with two chairs, with two tables back to back, and.
I actually, I think I've seen.
And the next, yeah, next thing I know.
I mean, I've seen y'all auditing like crazy, but, yeah.
I think y'all signed some autographs for some people.
I told people, you make it Parker County, you can make it. Thanks very much.
So, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Another one of these, we can do that lady over there, Miss Indiana. I'd be seeing her over there with the, in the red.
Do you have?
I'll, I'll give it to her.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to, uh?
Accept the audit.
Accept the audit?
Aye, okay.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the annual audit as presented.
Excellent.
Any other discussion?
Well done.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, quarterly financial report by Mr. Weber.
Okay. More financial stuff, so this is what y'all are ready for. So this is just for the first quarter, so it, it should be pretty straightforward, honestly, what we're looking at here. Um, there's just really a few things, I mean, a lot of it, you're going to be able to tell from what you've looked at, the few things I want to point out that are new, that have come up this quarter. The first, if you look on that front page, that capital project tracker, so I, we got the money in, obviously, the fourth water line, that got funded in December, I want to say, is when that finally got funded.
We closed December 10.
Closed in December, so, what I'm going to show you on here, I, I just first going to be the easiest, so if you look at that, I'm going to show it at 100%, obviously, we're, we only have 52,000, but that way you guys can just see, okay, overall for the project, you can see the bond, 13.7 million, what have we started spending, so you can start tracking this, you know, what's going on there. So like, so far, you had the house, the 250,000 for that house that you had to buy, and a lot of everything else is basically debt issuance type costs that have gone through to, to issue the debt there, so, but, but that way you guys can just see as a total what's going on there, uh, and then obviously the other ones are the, the building and the road, which will wind down here, you know, that may be spent all by now, uh, but this is as of the end of December, so, um, that's the main thing I want to show, that it's going to be new on there, we'll start tracking that. So I'm going to, just for reporting purposes for this, I'm just going to show, because we're going to capitalize those costs, so I'm not showing on the water fund, on, on the budget to actual P and L, I'm not going to show that debt issuance as income and all the, the cost as expense, it's just going to be capitalized, and you're just going to see it there as the total cost incurred. Does that make sense? Okay. So just so you know, reporting-wise, that's something to keep an eye on. The other thing, so just, again, a couple things to point out, so on general funds, on page two, you can see our M and O tax, you know, we're up almost 400,000 year to year, part of that's a timing thing, you know, I don't think we're going to be that much up for the year, but it just, that's, you know, progress-wise, we're in good shape there, you know, uh, sales tax, same thing, we're up about 20, 28,000, so we're right on budget, you know, see we're 25% quarter way through, so we're right on budget with the sales tax. So, revenue, I mean, starting out the year, revenue's strong on general funds, so that's good. Just overall on general fund, if you look at it, our expenses are up about 71,000 year over year, so, you know, revenue's obviously up strong, but expenses are up a little bit as well. On, on water fund, we're right on budget, if you look at total revenue, we're right at 25%, so I know last year, we started out, especially in the spring, with the weather was lower, and we had to kind of catch up a lot of the year, so we're trending ahead of last year so far, a little bit on that, so that's obviously a good thing. And then, the other thing I was going to point out, really, unless you have questions on some of the details on, on wastewater or some of the water expenses, I didn't have anything to specifically point out unless you guys wanted to look at it. You can see wastewater fairly comparable to last year and on budget, but the other thing I was going to point out is if you look on the, the, the bank account balances, so they have the cash, so it's going to be on page 10, couple new things, so, that, under the water fund, that UMB, TWDB escrow, you see that like 6,899 on there, so that, I'm, I'm just showing, that's our 52% of when, when the money, the debt was issued, it was funded in this escrow account, third-party account with UMB Bank, we can't access that money until we actually have a cost that, you know, we have to request the money, so that's essentially Willow Park's 52% of the 13 million that was initially in there, so just see, kind of see, okay, what cash-wise is still left in there. You know, the other thing I was just going to keep, kind of keep an eye on, so that wastewater package plant, that bank account right there, there about halfway through the page, 124,00645, that's what's still left from that wastewater temporary package plant that we put in, we had talked about, you know, what you could use that cost for, whether, you know, that's for y'all to decide, but there's still some money in there from that when that was issued, it's been sitting in there, it's been a lot, several months that hasn't really changed, so-
I think what, what Derek and Raymond feel free to, we're going to try to do some work at the Kingsgate List Station.
Oh, you know, we'll tear out, you'll pay as well, it's good.
Okay, so it's about 124,000 there, so yeah, just, just so y'all, I didn't want that to kind of get missed, I know we've had that in a little bit. And then the other thing, so obviously, in the summer, when you issued that extra debt, you know, you had 300,000, you know, you had 500,000 to the parks and 300,000 for drainage, so if you look there, so we have spent that 300,000, so that, you've done the projects, that's gone, we spent above and beyond that, because I think initially when you guys discussed it, it was in the $500,000 range if I remember right, and so essentially to cover the overage, there was a transfer from the solid waste fund of about 54,000, I think this was all discussed, obviously, when, when everything was done there, so that's where you see the cash change on the solid waste fund, that was transferred into the drainage fund for the remaining cost on that. And then I know it was, it was brought up on the tourism, that there's that cash balance down there, and I put that extra page in there, page 12, just so you guys can kind of see tourism revenue by year, and then the cash balance in that account, so you can kind of see, that's, that's money from the hotel occupancy tax that we've received, that really, since I've been here, I don't think we've ever spent anything out of that, I think there's just been, we've had the revenue come in every year, and then I know obviously the new hotel coming on, projecting, okay, what extra are you going to have, and then maybe some planning on with this, the, the cash that's there plus the extra revenue, you know, how to go spend in that, or what you need it for, so. Any questions on anything?
Thanks Jake.
Yeah, thank you.
Item, item number five, to discuss and take action, consider an act on the appointment of members to the Parks and Recreation Board, I'd like the council to appoint Mr. James McKibben to the Parks and Recreation Board, do we have a motion, please? James McKibben.
Was it there, another one too? Emily Thomas was, I didn't see James's.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to appoint James McKibben to the Parks and Rec Board.
So, we're not appointing Eleanor?
I'm making a motion that we appoint Mr. McKibben to the Parks Board, we have a motion, do we have a second? Any other discussion or questions?
Yes, I have a discussion. Conversations that I've had with Leah is that we need to, we're wanting to focus on events and whatnot, and Jim, I like Jim, he lives in my neighborhood, he's more of a gardening, he's a, he's a gardener, and the, uh, uh, master gardeners already satisfy that, in that capacity, and Parks Board, and the city, and also kind of goes back to what I presented about the economic development, where city promotes and encourages that positive environment with events, and Emily has extensive background with event planning, so Jim, Jim doesn't have any of that background, so I don't believe that Jim would be the best pick.
But events, does that fall under the parks?
Yes, that falls in the parks, parks and recreation, that's why they're going to be meeting monthly, that's one of the reasons they're going to be meeting monthly, is so they can start putting plans together, community events.
We're going to, my motion is to appoint Mr. McKibben to the Parks Board, we have a motion and a second, is there anything else, Amy?
So, we're not considering Emily Thomas at all?
We did, but the motion is for Mr. McKibben to be on the Parks Board.
But we could vote against that one and make a motion for Emily, possibly, if, if you could choose that instead.
But how your ordinance is written on the park board, and we have one spot open for a one-year term, is that your mayor will make a motion for, because we have duty, right, we have allocations, so him, whomever they, the mayor makes a motion for, then the council would vote for it, so it would take, the council would make a motion, the, the mayor would have to make the motion as far as to be voted on, because that's, that's how the ordinance is.
Okay, but council would have to approve it, so the council would rather wait, I believe it'd be better for us to wait for a candidate that has background with events, since that's one, that's a, something I've had many conversations with Leah about, and Jim, he's not, he's not in events.
I think we've got some, I, I think we have experience with the city and on the council on the staff for events. So, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If there's not any discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Two motion carries, thank you. Item number six, discussion and take action to consider an act on the 2019 City of Willow Park Police Department Racial Profiling Report, Chief West, you're up.
Mayor, Council, I'll be brief, the data was collected according to the Code of Criminal Procedure, there is no evidence of racial profiling within the City of Willow Park, and we are required by statute to submit this report to council, as well as the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, TEACOL, and they have already accepted the report, so basically, unless you have any questions.
Thanks for what you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We need a motion to accept the, the report.
I'll make a motion to approve the, to accept the City of Willow Park Police Department Racial Profiling Report for 2019.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in, any discussion or questions? I was in the railhead, I don't know, two, three weeks ago, and there's some highway patrolmen there, and I offered to buy their lunch, and I found out that Friday they free at railhead, so I didn't have to buy their lunch, but they were very complimentary of the Willow Park Police Department, without exception, and they said, you guys step up, they don't wait on a call, they go to it, so I wanted you to know that, and I think I, I told Chief West that, so, thanks Chief West for what you do. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you. Item number seven, to consider an act on items to be considered for future council meetings.
Were doing any?
They had never, we had a, we had a conversation for about 45 minutes, a week and a half ago, and he never followed up with the scope of work nor quote for economic development.
Okay, I may follow up with that.
So, I'm waiting on him. We have, uh, there's nothing, well, we'll get into eight, is there anything council wants that y'all like to bring up for the next meeting?
We had that, there's something else.
What's the schedule, what's, what's the-
I've got the heli, oh no, that's-
The helipad, so the helipad, the, we didn't get the letter from Pat until last week.
We're going to do that in March.
Yeah, we'll do that, we're going to do that in March, we sent the letters out today to, how many letters did we send out?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight people with a 11, a thousand feet?
Well, you have to go 1,000 feet from each point on the property, and I, I aired on the side of, you know, if it was 1,004, I sent them a letter, so.
So, we will do, we'll do that on March the 11th, kind of getting in, flirting with number eight, I don't see a need for us to meet on the 25th of February, I don't, we won't have a good response back for the helipad, I don't, there's nothing pressing that would require us to come back in two weeks, but if, obviously we will, if, if there's something that y'all want to bring up.
Let's have the next, let's have the next meeting on March the 10th.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll do-
We need a motion to cancel the second meeting.
I'll make a motion to cancel the second meeting in February.
Actually, on, let's finish this, let's finish seven, we'll do helipad. Um, is there anything, there's some other things that's on my whiteboard, but I'm not going to bring them up just yet, because I don't, I'm not sure we're there yet. Anything else from council, other than a helipad update and veracity if I can get the scope of work?
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, as far as road, you know, new road construction, reconstruction, main arteries, in light of our, you know, where our financial standings are after this audit, and when we think we can dovetail those in is, you know, projecting out, you know, over the years, when, when does that look like that's going to happen?
Okay, I can do that.
I can just tell that.
Yep.
And the, uh, annexing in of the-
Annexation's going to be-
Thirty feet.
Yep.
Over here, on Bank End.
Oh, we're getting that cleaned up, good.
We should have that done.
Yeah, that should, Pat should have that done, he's coordinating with the county, the new statute came in September 1, so the county has to do, go through another process.
Since we're not going to be meeting until March, thinking there's probably enough time, you can kind of put together, you know, where we are with the water project, like, you know, where-
Fort Worth Water?
Fort Worth Water, and we may start those discussions about how the numbers in the funds have been balancing out and what have you, and just start that discussion, you know, things that were touched upon tonight, it'd be good to just get a good update overview on.
Can I throw wastewater in there too?
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Okay.
Okay, are you done with number seven?
Yes, we're done with seven.
Next council meeting, setting date and time, we just did that, didn't we?
No, I need a motion to make to set the next council meeting for March, the, is it the 10th?
And cancel them?
Cancel, cancel the, cancel the 25th, and our next meeting will be the 10th of March.
Yeah.
Is it?
I'll make a motion to cancel the February 25th date for council meeting, and our next council meeting scheduled for March the 10th.
Thank you, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
I know the staff is very disappointed that we're not going to have another council meeting this month.
I am too.
Say we got a workshop.
Bernie?
We got a workshop.
Hey-
That's one more.
Can we, let's go ahead and do comments, mayor's comments, city manager's comments, before we go to executive.
All right, we're going to do mayor's comments and-
Mayor, council, and city manager.
Well, crap, where's my page here?
Last page, information.
I know, but I missed it, lost it. Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for their time, and I don't have any other comments. City council, anybody having-
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for the great job on the ribbon cutting, on the new public safety building, great job, and, and, you know, a lot, you know, these big projects are just being done in a professional and, and manner, and, and just great to see all these new things happening, so.
Hold on a minute.
Rose, what day is the ribbon cutting?
Day 25.
Thank you. Ranch House Road ribbon cutting will be the 25th, do we have a time, Rose?
11:00 AM.
11:00 AM, February 25th will be Ranch House Road ribbon cutting, forgot that.
Will you send us an invite?
Mr. Grimes, you're up.
Uh, go ahead.
Counsel wanted to say something else, uh, first, I want to say Candy, great job on the audit, and Brian, so thank you again on that, Chief West, great report as well, and thank you for everything that you and your team does, really appreciate it, same with you, Chief Lenore. Also, just want to make sure everybody knows that early voting starts February 18th to February 28th, and the primary election day is March 3rd, so please get out and vote, and make sure people know, or at least you make your voices heard.
Can we vote every day of early voting?
That's early, not often.
Thank you, Eric, all right, Mr. Grimes, you're up.
So, just to dovetail off that, we are an early voting site, so they will be in here the next, I guess, when does it start?
Two weeks, at Tuesday.
Yeah, so they will be voting in here.
It's definitely good we're not having a meeting then.
That was the only reason.
Yeah, so the 25th is a really good, it's going to be crowded here, as always, we expect that, we will go ahead and cancel, we will close City Hall for city business on the 3rd, we're looking at, at trying to move operations on an alternative site, Carrie has generously offered us her office, she said Bernie can hang out with her.
With his badge and gun, right?
Gets his badge and his gun, I get to hang out with Mike Lenore, and all's good. No, we will probably close City Hall on the 3rd, I'm going to just kind of judge the traffic and see how that goes. Tomorrow at the Chamber, there's a mayor's forum, and luncheon, all the mayors in Parker, in East Parker County are going to be there, and so you have a ticket, just let me know if you want to use it, and we'll get you in. We just discussed the Ranch House Road ribbon cutting, we're going to be closed on President's Day, the 17th, couple of notes of interest, I will be at a city manager's clinic with Bernie on the 27th and 28th, we will be in Granbury, the luxurious accommodations that we were at last year or last summer, and then if you are truly bored, and you really need excitement in your life, you can go to Public Funds Investment Training in Austin with me and Bernie and Candy.
Maybe, just for goodness-
We need to wrap this up.
All right, that, that is all my comments, sir.
Uh, one thing I forgot to say, March the 9th, the mayors of Parker County are hosting a clergy luncheon at the DOS for all the clergy in Parker County, I don't know what month we did it for Willow Park, you remember?
September.
September, we had a lunch for the clergy in Willow Park, we had all nine, I think we lost, we missed one clergy there, it was very, very well-received, March 9th, and it's being sponsored by a company, so there's no expense to any city or anything, but that'll be March the 9th at the DOS Center, we look to have about 125 mayors, city managers, some clergy there, Ray Phil Ryan will be speaking, that's March the 9th, so I'm excited about that. And I'm done, that's it?
Well, we have exec-
We have executives.
I'm with you, I got it.
I need my in the back.
Matt, what if I don't want to give it back? All right, we're going to executive session at 7:50 PM.